There is no need, Mr. Chair, to officially accept the resignation of Val King. Protected three D of the bylaws of this committee. His resignation, his tender of resignation was effective to terminate his position.
Right. That was easy. Any comments? Before we go any further, I'd like to go ahead and get introductions of guests that are present.
Sorry, I just moved over here so I can hear you. My name is Bruce Livingston. I'm Livingston Dairy Consulting. I brought my staff members, Narine Livingston, Kevin Cuelo, and Marlene Furra.
Would you like to move over here, Bruce? Go ahead and invite them. Josh, go ahead.
I'm Justin Line Dector. I'm a dairy farmer up in Northern Visalia, Southern Daniel.
Josh has received an application for committee membership from Josh. I think Supervisor Curry and I will be meeting him after this meeting. Anybody else? Bruce, for introductions. You've been there, douche it, why should you want to hear this?
I did.
Okay. So you said she was staff. You just told me.
Said she was staff. Okay, my boss.
I know how that works.
Specifically in the office.
All right. Item number two under the agenda. First off, I'd really like to thank everyone that's participated on the subcommittee on animal carcasses disposal. There have been several meetings, a fair amount of work done by all parties. Really appreciate it as Chair, especially appreciate the effort that Trish has done to chair that subcommittee and prepare this report. Trish, would you like to go ahead and present?
Yeah, I'm gonna steal Doug's copy. I don't have one. So, the committee was put together as an ad hoc committee. We met once just amongst members of this committee to kind of shore up what are we seeking to address? And then we brought a variety of individuals forth to, you know, be stakeholders and start a dialogue with them. So we met at the Farm Bureau building three times. We felt like there were some specific local challenges that we wanted to, you know, define and bring a little more specificity to why this is an ongoing issue. We've said it here before, and I won't just read from the report entirely, but basically, we need to find some local and interim and short-term solutions. Potentially, those may lead into longer-term solutions of what happens to animals when they expire in this county? And there's really not a pipeline or a legal means by which to dispose of those carcasses. So we know that this kind of falls in several buckets of challenge. There's folks that call animal control for assistance. There's folks that call the county ag commissioner for assistance. There's folks that are calling Farm Bureau asking for where to go with this, you know, concern. And when there's a heat declaration, there's kind of a protocol that's followed in the commercial livestock sector, but it doesn't address the ongoing year-round challenges of when small backyard hobby breeders and folks that are just raising drop calves and goats and sheep, when they have mortality, you know, when they have losses, they end up a lot of the time on the side of the road. And so, there's a larger conversation, and I'm really excited, we're gonna kick off today talking about rural dumping, because that's another whole challenge, but it does kind of dovetail into this carcass disposal and animal disposal challenge as well. So we convened the committee two more times with other county agencies and a number of different stakeholders. We had folks from the solid waste management division at the last meeting. We weren't able to get them at the second meeting, which is kind of why we ended up having the third meeting. We really felt like we gotta talk to the folks that really understand solid waste and solid waste management in the county and run the landfill part of it. We certainly wanted to make sure county animal services have a seat at the table. While they do have an incinerator and do have the ability to cremate, you know, dogs, cats, and even some sheep and goats, sheep largely don't work in the incinerator because of the wool problem and the heat that's created, but they are a service available to do some of that disposal, but not on a large scale. And they're not out there advertising that as a service. They're really not set up to be a crematorium for a large number of goats or sheep or alpacas or anything else that dies in someone's backyard or small farm and needs proper disposal. So, we heard some really good input from the county animal services manager, Cassie Hethington, about some of their constraints and concerns. We had Keith at the table representing environmental health department. We had even at the third meeting, a veterinary medicine teaching research center veterinarian, Dr. Noelia Silva Del Rio, that came out and talked a little bit about composting and livestock management and some of the more commercial-scale issues. And then we have ranchers like Ron Perigin, members of this committee like Jim and myself, and our ag commissioner, Tom Tucker, all part of this, you know, pre-meeting progression as well. So, it is hard to sometimes identify and quantify what the problem, scope and scale is. We know mortality rates go up during high-heat episodes, and that's one issue. But, we know that year-round, there's a problem with the fact that the rendering industry does not accept sheep and goats, and now in more recent years, they don't accept equines either, particularly if there's any euthanasia drugs in their system. So, we really wanted to address some of those components and bring back findings, kind of try to identify what those findings were from each stakeholder's perspective, and then issue some solutions or at least some thoughts to move forward to ag advisory committee. And I guess at the appropriate juncture when we have a forum, see if we can advance these further to the county board supervisors. So those solutions look to be kind of the last half of the first page there. I wrapped this out in the notes in our minutes. They already got a very responsive answer from solid waste management that they were going to go ahead and start looking into what the permitting process would look like to change the certification at the landfill, at least the large landfill in Visalia, related to taking, you know, mammalian remains on a year-round basis. It's hard to understand what's going on even in neighboring counties, because apparently neighboring counties have also been grandfathered in and have different leniencies or flexibilities or rules around what their landfills can accept. So even just saying, "Well, what's Madera doing?" or "King's doing?" or "Kern doing?" Doesn't always necessarily mean it can and will happen in this county based on how landfills were grandfathered in and permitted. So we learned a little bit about that piece, but there was very strong support from solid waste management to start that permitting inquiry right away. In fact, so rapidly, we were like, "Well, we don't really have authority to tell you to go do that. We're just asking a bunch of questions and trying to put together, you know, information to bring back to our supervisors." But, Mr. Howard felt compelled that, like, yeah, they could just look right into that and start applying for that permit. So, whether that's a very short-term fix or that's a multi-year process, I don't know. Don't know anything about certifying.
I can add to that if you'd like.
Sure.
It would require a permit revision, because it's not allowed on the permit. But, they're doing other things at the landfill. They're gonna be adding a composting facility out there, so they're gonna be doing some CEQA issues. And I think CEQA would have to be addressed, but they're gonna be addressing it already. So I imagine that would...
Right.
Right, it could probably be addressed at that time. And then when environmental health is processing the permit, that would be the time to do it, because it'd just be one more thing added, and it wouldn't be that big a deal just for that, because they're doing other things out there. It's not a multi-year thing. Once they're allowed to do it, they would be permitted to do it. And then it would be whether or not they want to do it on a daily, monthly basis by appointment only. But they would be technically allowed to take it there without any issues.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. We had talked about whether there was an opportunity to create a year-round composting site for disposal of livestock and animal remains in improper form. We talked about the fact that this really is an ongoing problem, and that maybe our county has to take, you know, more direct measures in stating that this is an ongoing emergency. And maybe the county could declare that we're in an emergency situation until we find some type of legal means by which to do disposal year-round. Because truly, right now, we have livestock producers that are working outside of the law any time of the year trying to dispose of certain species. We also talked about whether or not funding more staff, more equipment, the right type of equipment, and potentially a larger incinerator would be an option for animal services. Animal services certainly does not need to or look for more work in the sense that they are already an agency responding to a tremendous amount of animal calls in the county. But, if we were going to charge animal services with picking up more of this work, then at minimum, they're going to need more equipment, more people, the right kind of equipment to pick up a dead horse on the shoulder of a road or handle other large animals into the incinerator. So, the incinerator they have currently is really equipped to handle dogs and cats, not large animals. We also talked about whether or not we could develop an ordinance at the county level to just address providing illegal means for on-farm burial, and whether that could be vetted and, you know, made a more standardized solution. We know that we're not going to likely change quickly the state water and air quality laws that currently prevent a lot of these solutions from being locally implemented. But if there's emergency provisions where, under a declaration of emergency, the county can give us those tools for 24 months or up to 40 months, or whatever some of those numbers are, that's better than not having some of those tools in our toolbox. So, those were the types of things we talked about. The last bullet on there was hiring a dead hauler. Literally putting out a request for a proposal to see if we could, you know, bring in on a contracted fee basis a hauler who specializes in removing carcasses and takes dead horses and ponies and llamas and goats and sheep and takes them to an appropriate place for either compost or disposal, even if it means taking them out of county, which is maybe one of those solutions. Cassie had information from animal services about working with some of those folks. They do get expensive kind of quickly depending on what they're picking up and where they're having to haul it to. We don't really know the size of this problem, but my last comment will just be that Tom, our ag commissioner, provided us some general assumptions about the, you know, the livestock and production herd sizes in the county. And we know roughly from just the crop report, you know, that we've got over a million head just of cattle in the county. We know that there's a lot of goats, there's a fair amount of hogs, quite a bit of sheep, and an unknown number of equine and ponies and camelids, like alpacas and llamas. So, we know that this is a food safety and a public safety health risk concern when these carcasses end up, you know, just on county rightways and shoulders of the road. We know it's an even bigger issue when they get dumped in the middle of an orange orchard or a walnut orchard, particularly nut crops where they have to go in later and harvest off that same ground. Having dead animals decomposing out there is not a good thing. So, I know this issue has been hashed and hashed and hashed a lot. Jim knows it's been around for a long, long time, so this is not a new problem. We're just trying to figure out how we more collaboratively work within our local agencies to find some solutions, even if they're just some interim solutions that give our board of supervisors some latitude in helping their agencies respond. So, that's what the ad hoc committee kind of is putting forth in the little two-pageer that I put together. Happy to discuss it further or take any questions or other thoughts from Jim or Keith, who were there with us during those conversations.
I have one thought that came up with our staff, because the last few weeks has been really hot. And I was waiting, right, like everyone else, probably wondering if we were gonna enter into another state of emergency for mortalities. And, you know, I think one thing that, I know there's not real, you know, there's talk of a process of, oh, if there is a declared emergency, but it's always after the yelling and, "What am I gonna do?" and, you know, and I think, because even if the landfill's gonna be permitted, you know, that could take a year. I mean, just the review process, when it gets to us, not even CEQA or anything, can take up to 150 days. So, it's not gonna be this year. It may be well into next year. So, we were talking, and say, "Oh, man, I hope nothing happens." And it seems like, you know, the process that we kind of all agreed that worked, at least for now, was, you know, once there starts being mortalities, that the county would declare a state of emergency. And then, what we don't know is, once it's declared a state of emergency, what worked was the dairymen being able to compost the cows on-site for a specific amount of time. And then they were able to be received at the landfill easier than in a, you know, a different state. And then, because if they ever do start handling the cows, I imagine they're gonna have to probably ask different times. Maybe they want to take it special equipment, special handling, because you don't want to mix that with the general public.
I think Keith stood around the table back behind us, Bruce here. One overarching thing that we talked about at our level and also at the state level, anything that we do is not to replace the rendering system.
Right.
And most, all of our commercial dairy cattle operators have an agreement, either a contract or an agreement with the renderers. And, you know, the rendering, the rendering is still the most efficient and the best way for the vast majority of the cattle we have in Tulare County, those that are confined to animal facilities. But that doesn't cover the rest of the county. And, but still, that's the, that commercial confined animal facilities is the overall largest number. Now, yes, in the past, when we had emergencies, we had a heat wave plus a problem at the renderers. But then we had an emergency where we had to find a way, that's when we first got that exposure. So, when we had this huge heat spell. But, and even at the livestock auction, you know, they had one of the biggest die-offs. We had 30 carcasses, or there were 40 carcasses happening there. But, what we're addressing here are those carcasses that show up on other people's properties or people that are sheep growers, you know, we have a lot of commercial sheep though. Our goat operations are the backyard people that have essentially no legal recourse when they have a mortality. It's gonna show up in somebody's walnut orchard, or it's gonna show up illegally buried, or something along the lines of that. So, I just wanted to clarify that as far as...
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to get around that.
Talking about that emergency process.
Yeah, this is the thing I was touching on, is when that does happen, and it usually coincides with the heat waves which we went through. And the only thing I was gonna say is, it would be, and I'm specifically talking about if the renderers can't take them and there's no outlet, because you get too many cows dying off or whatever, is I think the process, it would be nice if the process was speeded up, like, okay, we're getting word the renderers can't handle the flow, and now we need an outlet. And I think there needs to be a process that would happen faster, like, okay, declare emergency, that's the number-one thing. That happens within a certain amount of time. And then, the dairies are allowed to compost on-site. What I don't know is, do they need permission from cow recycle and the water board at that time, each time? Or can, once the county declares a state of emergency, they can go ahead and do it and trigger it? Because usually what happens, and you guys all know, it takes too long to get to that point. And then we, the environmental health has to write waivers for the landfills to be able to take it, which we wouldn't have to do anymore if that gets permitted. But, in the meantime, if this were to happen again, it would be nice if the process could happen faster.
I think maybe Tom could address that. Tom, can you hear us?
Yeah.
I think Tom was very timely on that last one he had.
Mr. Chairman, Jim?
Yes.
That's Tom.
Jim?
Yes, Tom.
Okay, sorry about that. I thought I was asked if I could hear one comment.
You did not hear the comment?
No, I'm sorry. It's been broken up. Did you have a question for me?
Well, Keith was discussing how long it may take to get an emergency declaration during a heat emergency.
It's not so much just the declaration. It's more going from the declaration and getting everything set up to where, yeah, it's okay for the dairies to compost, and it's, you know, so we can get everything in line to where it's a process, not like, oh, this happened. Okay, hey, now you guys gotta do this, and we're waiting for you to do this, so we can do us. It'd be nice if there was a process. And maybe, maybe we just leave it alone if solid waste is serious about taking the carcasses down the road, because, you know, it doesn't happen a lot, you know, but it's happened a few times over the last, maybe two, three times over the last two years.
Let me go back to kind of the point of this write-up. We know there is a legal and interim and, you know, process by which we can handle this when there is a heat mortality event. And even if the process lags, even if there's a delay between when our ag commissioner and the county declares the emergency, there is a process by which most commercial livestock operations can figure this out. We're really more trying to illuminate that there is a year-round problem for the sheep, goat, and equine sectors of our community that never have a legal means by which to dispose of an animal. That there is 12 months out of the year that if you're a backyard guy with 40 goats and you have a problem, you have no legal place to take that goat. There is no way to dispose of that animal really in the county without running into other challenges. So, we want to address that, and we wanted to provide some solutions for which the board of supervisors...
Okay, so what I was talking about isn't a part of this?
Not directly. I mean, they're all interrelated.
I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay. I think what we're really carrying about here is trying to figure out the rural dumping piece, which is another agenda item, but ties into this, and help illuminate for the county what we see are some of the overlaps and the gaps in dealing with animal carcass disposal, particularly outside of the commercial sector. If that makes sense?
Sure. Yeah, I have a question. Has anybody looked into the methane digesters? I know that my family's been going through that process, and we have a few more going in through different counties. But, at one point, they were saying that, you know, smaller decompositions actually work well inside the digesters just for, one, getting more methane, and, two, decomposing those animals where we couldn't before because of air and water quality. But, didn't know if that was a path that anybody looked into as far as the sciences or the engineering behind that.
The only science that we really talked about at the last meeting was because we had the veterinarian present, and she had brought up some information about composting in other states. We talked a little bit about an emulsification process using water to break down carcasses. But we're not there yet. I mean, I had hoped from a more research and scientific perspective that maybe there was something between our veterinary medicine teaching research center and our cooperative extension service to take on some kind of a pilot project that would make Tulare County, you know, advance this subject in the name of figuring out a more scientific solution, and that if we were successful in building a pilot project of that nature, that maybe it would lend ourselves to find a more permanent solution for this problem. But we didn't even get there in three meetings. I mean, we spent one meeting figuring out the shape of the table. We spent the next meeting trying to figure out how to get people around it, get the right agencies represented. And then, we really weren't wanting to be a standing committee that just kept reashing the same agenda. The intent was, let's identify the problem, write down some conversations we had, get to a few bullet points of maybe what we should tell the board of supervisors to think about, and then let Board of Supervisors give us our next set of directions, like, what do they need now from the ag advisory committee to take action on any of those possible ideas? I love the idea of finding a more scientific or research-based outcome for doing something here on a pilot level. I think it would give us more cover from the air board and the water boards if the county could get a group of veterinarians or UC extension specialists to want to take this on as a project that they somehow create a research plot to study. But, we're just looking for, how do we untie the hands that are tied, that have been tied for a lot of years, that are causing more rural dumping and more illegal disposal of carcasses in the county? Now, one last comment I'll make about the fact that you're not gonna change the public's, you know, desire to just shoot shovel and shut up, as we say sometimes. You've already got a free mattress program in this county, right? You can take mattresses to the dump for free, is what I'm told by solid waste folks. How many of you can count up the mattresses that are all over the county, on every county road, that I'm sure these fine individuals will tell us about? So how do we actually change the, you know, the environment of the county to make it less okay to dump? Because, I mean, if we went through all these steps and we got solid waste management to get the permit, and we put all the, you know, all the pieces in place to help provide this service, let's say we hire up a dead hauler, and we give animal services a bigger incinerator and a crane and a truck to go out and pick up horses with, and we do all those things, will we stop seeing mattresses on the side of the road? Probably not. Will we stop seeing dead horses and goats and sheep on the side of the road? Probably not. So, I don't know what the solution is, but we know that there's a problem. And we know we gotta figure out some local ideas that are different than what we've been...
I can touch a little bit on what you asked. Mr. Livingston? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna respond to Justin real quick. The digester general order, the water board prohibits co-digesting animal products. So, I mean, you can, we can always get that changed, but that's a long process as well.
Yeah. It might be something on a, like you were mentioning, a pilot study? Because I know they've done it with the cow carcasses. They've done the pilot study on that a few times, so that might be something down the line, but it would probably have to go through cow recycle.
Well, and I think on-farm composting, the commercial producers have plenty of components to take. Your carbon material for the carcass to be disposed in, make a polymer, spread some straw, use the proper dimension, really with a little bit of documentation, we can apply with really everything that's required fairly simply. It doesn't apply to your backyard folks, however, and that's really, in my estimation, that's the bulk of the problem here. Commercially, and recently, the water board has sent out prior to the hot weather this year, said, "Hey, we're gonna allow on-farm composting. You guys, just what you need is a declared emergency. The county ag commissioner says it's an emergency. Get busy, do it right." CDQAP was supposed to come out with some new and improved guidelines. They haven't done that yet, but there's plenty of good information out about on-farm, proper on-farm composting, and the documentation is hard to support that.
That's part of that research project. And we've proven it. We've proven it to the CFA. I mean, there are concerns, one of the main concerns CFA has is the loss of control of disease levels. Now, cows goes to a renderer, they're tested for BSE and other diseases, and quarantineable diseases. And I think that's maybe the biggest hurdle that we have. And that's a state that they're in, the CFA, in, they don't think, 42 other states, it's fine.
Well, Mr. Chair, we don't have a quorum, so I guess today, this is just a, you know, for information-only item, and perhaps we need to place it on the next agenda for action?
Or, our supervisory representative could take a board action somewhere and request us to bring it to the board without having to have an action here taken.
Doc, are we ready, Chris? Do you think we have enough information for him to give options or to see? I'm just asking.
This is the work product that I can say is available today. Whether those bullet points you think give the supervisors enough direction, I couldn't answer that for you. This was meant to be a short-term conversation amongst an ad hoc group. We pulled that together. We've put forth some recommendations. I don't know which of these the Board of Supervisors would want more info on.
No, what I meant is, do you think you guys have enough information? Because the board's gonna ask questions when it comes up. Do you think you have enough information for what you have at this point? Obviously, more questions will come out, and we can get further directions.
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable coming before the board with what you have right now?
Jim, I'm still checking.
I remember that, of that committee, I would suggest that we have enough to go to the board, that for the board to make a decision as to where something needs to be assigned to staff or... In other words, you put, get some guidance, fill up with some, fill up with these, what would be solutions? Would these solutions be viable or other solutions, and we go forward with it? But, obviously, it's gonna take quite a bit of staff work and more than one department to do something.
I'll speak to CEO, but then I'll be direct on what you guys want to experience. I'll definitely follow. But I'll, I'll definitely follow.
Actually, like forwarding to the board, or, or even if that's-
Not at this meeting. We can always discuss and, and just have, and make some discussion-
Carry, carry forward.
Um, you know, and carry it forward, but it would have to, in order to make an official recommendation to the board, that would be an action of this committee, and so we have to have that agendized on a future meeting with a quorum present.
So, that's really my recommendation, is that we carry this matter forth to the next agenda, and if we have a quorum at that meeting, then we take formal action to either submit this as a white paper, or prioritize one or two or three of these items we think are, you know, appropriate to forward to the board, and then we take that to the board.
All right. Tricia, thank you, Tricia, thank you very much for your-
You're welcome.
One last question.
I'm the animal carcass disposal diva.
If solid waste permits our landfill to accept animals, I, I, obviously, we have to see what that looks like, but how much of this goes away if that-
Well, I don't think all of it does, because several things that were brought up in the third meeting was that Mr. Howard, on behalf of Solid Waste, was recommending that their efforts would have to be on a cost recovery basis. So, if we find out that the county's landfill, you know, wants to charge 400 bucks to take your dead horse, I still suspect very few people are going to show up in line up to pay that 400 bucks to the landfill. Um, so, we really weren't comfortable with what that meant, you know, what does a cost recovery fee schedule look like, and of course, he couldn't, you know, pull that out of his crystal ball at this moment, but his assumptions were, sure, we could write the permit and get certified, and probably open this up to a year-round acceptance of carcasses, but we're going to do it on a cost recovery, which might still make it really cost prohibitive to a lot of our rural backyard, small, you know, small-scale breeders and, and folks that have pets and critters that would fall into this group. Um, you know, and like I said, some of this is just knowing where to direct the, the problem when the problem crops up. My, my office gets a handful of these calls every year, ag commissioner's office gets them, we mostly bounce them to Cassie, but, uh, Cassie's team at Animal Services can really only respond to things that their truck and staff and equipment will, will accommodate. Um, I know we had a dead goat call last week, and it was, you know, wrapped in a bag and left on the edge of Brian Waddy's orchard, and, you know, we said, well, we can try to get Animal Control to come out and pick it up, but it's probably actually going to be something that maybe the roads department has to help with. Um, you know, the other problem is, is just the capacity. Animal Control is responding to live animals as much as possible, particularly during times of extreme heat. We're seeing a huge uptick just because of the drought in, you know, skinny animals. You've all probably heard about the terrible misfortune of those horses that died in Porterville a few days back, so there's a lot of other more critical issues that are coming up that creates a prioritization of who gets responded to. And certainly, dead animals get, you know, picked up last if there's neglect and cruelty and live animal welfare concerns abounding, which there always are. So, um, I think, you know, some of these solutions are something that the county could, could do some exploration with either their legal counselor, counsel, or other appropriate, you know, folks to look into whether we could live under some kind of year-round exemption or emergency declaration because there are no other options. You know, deciding to go out to an RFP for a dead hauler, that's something that the county has to decide if, you know, that's in their bandwidth, that they want to pay for a dead hauler. Again, if they, if they do that on cost recovery, are they just going to pass that dead hauler fee right on to the person with a dead horse? If they are, we're right back to, what good is the solution if the solution's too expensive for most people to want to help, you know, take on? So-
And if the county permitted the landfill, if there was maybe, you know, maybe where people could afford, they could pay, but maybe there was an alternate funding mechanism for-
Yeah.
Something that, hey, you know, for roadside pickup, I mean, obviously, you know, they have to do something, so maybe another way to generate some funds that would help with disposal.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Trish. I think we'll, we're going to move on, or, or, or other item that we have on the agenda today is something, uh, continuing ongoing issues we have with rural dumping. And we have with us guests from our county sheriff's office, Gary Bird, and Captain John Gonzalez, and, and they, they brought their supervisor.
Who's the clicker?
You're just the clicker, huh? Well, you're going to control everything they say, man. So, with that, Captain Gonzalez, would you, are you going to lead off, or Gary going to lead off, or who's leading off?
Oh, I'm just going to introduce Gary. He's my partner here, and in charge of our two litter crews, so. Gary? Okay.
Our supporting agents are RMA, uh, Resource Management Agency, Sol, uh, Tulare County Solid Waste, and Tulare County Dump Bureau. Through the supporting agencies, local farmers and ranchers, uh, county workers, et cetera, uh, they contact the TCSO farm manager, the advising of litter and tire dump. Assigned, uh, three different litter crews from TCSO. Uh, they handle a daily route throughout Tulare County, um, all the roads into Tulare County and rural areas. Referrals and requests, we try to service them within one to three days from receiving them. Uh, we haul them to two legal Tulare County dumps, one at Teapot Dome, and the other one in Vice Day Landville. The requests and referrals of litter mileage cards are collected each day along with the items that they picked up. We keep all the, we're, uh, TCSO collects all the cards at the end of the month, and what we do is we put our stats together, document, documentation, uh, for proof. All rural areas of Tulare County, uh, into Tulare County jurisdiction are served on a daily basis, maintained by the litter crews for collection. Uh, we cover between four, 4,000 to 5,000 miles per month. The TCSO farm litter crew collects on the average of 2,500 pounds of trash from rural county roads each day, totaling over 912,000 pounds of litter a year. Illegal dumps include appliances, electronics, mattresses, tires, and other miscellaneous items ranging from clothing, food, furniture, non-bidegradable trash items, et cetera. In the year of 2019, 2020 fiscal year, over 11,000 appliances, electronics, mattresses, tires were collected by the TCSO farm litter crews, supporting TCSO, DRC workers for all illegal dumps. The TCO, TCSO, sorry, uh-huh, farm litter crews are assigned to tire abatement daily stem, uh, response time, and referrals and request calls. In the fiscal year of 2019, 2020, over 9,000 tires were collected from TCSO, excuse me, Tulare County Farm, Tulare County roads and rural areas. Sorry about that, I'm out of my, rim. Future litter and tire abatement improvements to quality service for fiscal year of 2021, '22. Fiscal year of 2021 data, they, travel time from North County to South County is a significant impact on the number of referrals and requests that can be serviced in one day. In the fiscal year of 21, '22, TCSO farm litter crew plans to house one litter crew to South County to maximize travel times, or minimize, minimize travel time and maximize the time of allotment each day for collection. A fourth litter crew team member is suggested to provide means for this change team assignment.
So, right now, our three litter crews are stationed out of your farm, correct, which is that Bob Wiley contingent facility behind you in the backyard, our rest of our farm.
How many crews, how many crews are there now?
I got three.
How many do they, how many did there used to be?
I believe there used to be two, correct? Two, when Tom first started this, it was two. And I was at, when I was at road camp working as sergeant, that's when I first got involved or rec, or recognition of it, so.
How many are on a team, I guess?
I have one staff member and two DRC.
It's like a, a three-person team that goes out?
With, uh, with our lead farm guy.
Now, if we have a lot of inmates, and we know we got like a big tire dump, one like that, then we'll send three inmates into the truck just to speed up this.
So, our plan for that fourth one to be stationed out at South County contingent facility. So, the less time you're traveling, you know, they'd be able to already, you know, just go out and pick up.
Mr. Chair, can I share just a couple comments that maybe will open up dialogue on this?
Sure.
So, Farm Bureau's been partnering with the Sheriff's Farm Program on this for, what, 20-plus years now, maybe 30-plus years, long time. Uh, we have Tom Gwynne, your, your predecessor on our Board of Directors, so Tom regularly talks to me about this, and hears from us a lot, and always helps us find Gary if we can't run him down through the fax line or email. So, the Farm Bureau takes the phone calls from a, a number that we maintain, and, and folks often think they're calling a sheriff's dispatch or some other, you know, line, so we, we go through that quick exercise to explain they're calling Farm Bureau, but that we're relaying those calls, you know, to the farm manager, and that the sheriff's department is dispatching those road crews. So, I actually thought that during the height of the program, uh, Tom was deploying more like seven or eight teams around the county, but you're saying it's never been more than two?
Two, three.
Okay, okay. Well, Ron may have trouble chiming in, I don't know how good the speakers are and how much they're hearing of this, but like Ron Perigin, you know Ron gets hit almost weekly with a new dump.
We're up there-
You're up there chronically. I mean, it's just a, they dump it, and someone, you pick it up, and they dump it the next day, and pick it up, and they dump it the next day. So, we've gotten some ranchers and growers that are just, you know, kind of on the hot list, that get hit a lot, but he had talked to the sheriff a few months ago, and the sheriff said, we just don't have the inmate, inmates available. The, the early release, the COVID situation, and a variety of these factors have just changed the amount of availability of labor to support your needs. So, um, I was wanting this presentation to come to Ag Advisory for a couple reasons. One, again, wanted to understand what's working now, what's the size and scope of it, and, and what can we do as county ag advisory to either elevate questions or concerns or support action being taken by the sort, Board of Supervisors to give you more resources, whatever that looks like. So, that was one of our key reasons for asking you to come out, or at least one of my reasons. For the most part, I think we mostly hear one call solves the problem, but we know sometimes that repeat dumping, you know, we, we fax you a letter to ask for it to be picked up, and three or four days later, they call back and say it still hasn't been picked up, or it's been dumped on once again. So, we were just curious as to what your response rates were, if you felt like you had proper funding and adequate support for labor, and, and what else could Ag Advisory do to help you do this difficult work, because it is a chronic and ongoing problem, and we get those calls, so we hear about it firsthand.
Because we've got areas in, uh, Cutler, Rosy, that you sent me faxed to them, uh, or email, that we pick up, the next day you're sending me another one, we've already picked up, but I'll drive it, look at it, sure enough, it's totally different. We've got, in the, in the Cutler, Rosy, Dinuba area, Claydon, Orange Cove, we've got about six hotspots right now that I can send a crew there right now, and we'll get a full load off of that. I don't know, you know, if we have, on some of these hotspots, like for instance, Ron Perigin, we put some cameras up, if we could catch, just catch one, uh, maybe we can get some of this load down, I don't know. But it, uh, these areas, we can clean it up today, and I can empty Monday morning, um, we're right back there. And, but there again, I've got all of Tulare County, and I've only got three crews, so I can't, you know, I've got to, yes, I know I got a pile over here, but I got to get this one cleaned up. The phone calls that come to me, people are irritated that we're not picking up. I'm sorry, we're working on it, you know, I don't know what else to do, but we, we'll get you, don't worry about it, we'll get it picked up.
One, one of the recommendations I had a, a number of years ago that I, I talked to the sheriff about it, a couple of our Farm Bureau socials, was, could we develop some type of app that allowed us to take pictures with a geo tracker? I mean, I drive by dump sites all the time, and I quickly take a picture, and I either text Tom so he can get in touch with you, or I text my office and say, okay, Susan, write this up and fax it to Gary, because we, you know, I, we just see it everywhere, and I don't know if any traction's been made on an idea like that, to set up some kind of geo tracker, you know, app?
It seems, it, it seemed like today's technology, that we might could improve, I don't know, improve the information flow, uh, make it easier to, to track.
And I don't know if that's anything that you would think would be of value, it's just an idea that I, you know, I talked to our sheriff about it two years ago.
So, somebody calls in and leaves you the pickup site, and we have, uh, sheriff's office sends our crew out, but does, is there any feedback saying the crew's been there?
No, our form has a place for you to sign off on and send it back to us, but I don't think that's ever been done.
You know, Tom, the way Tom always talked, the way, the way he taught me, like, we pass it out, my crew comes back in, it's signed, it's done, it goes into a file, it's held there for three months, and then after three months, we discard it.
Because I, I think, I think it would be beneficial for the ag community and the people that you're servicing, if they got feedback that, hey, we picked it up, you know, and maybe, you know, because that way they'll know that, that's a new dump. Okay, you picked it up, it's, it's a new dump, it's not, hey, I'm calling back for the third time-
Right.
-and it's really the third dump.
Yeah.
And, and we have a very close working relationship, I mean, I, and you, you deal with Susan in my office a lot, and we normally know it has been resolved because they stopped calling. I mean, the fact that they called back is when we know it's either a repeat dump, or you're a couple days out and getting to it, so we don't have that many upset people or complaints, we just have complaints like poor Ron, who is just like every other week being dumped on. Um, so, I, I guess part of this was to find out, is there a problem in terms of capacity or labor or availability? And, and yes, there is, you're hoping to add a fourth crew, and you're hoping to locate a crew in South County to shorten some of your miles traveled back and forth to these dump sites. So, that's illustrative, that's helpful to us to know that. It also is a bigger question of, how do we stop people from dumping in the county? And that may not be your problem to solve, but that's a problem we as Ag Advisory want to take on, is how do we stop rural dumping? It's affecting our farmers, it's affecting our property owners.
If, if they, if there were cameras at one of these dump sites, and you've got pictures, you've got license plates, what, what happens, what would happen from there?
And you have to catch them dumping, right? You have to catch them in the act, which is really problematic. Is that true, Mr. McCary?
Well, it's, it's a fraction, or it can be a mystery, John, but-
Uh, it's, uh, what, the one thing is, uh, what's, it's, it's a fraction and a mystery, but the problem is, is proving it, all right? So, say you get a trash dump, and you get some winners, right?
Yeah, Ron gets mailed if he knows-
So, you go to that, you say, hey, um-
And they say, I paid someone to haul this off legally.
Yeah, that, or I left it on the property, someone wants to dump it, and I let them move away.
Right.
Like you said, without actually catching them in the act.
Yeah. So, we have the challenge of, are, are there some bad actors out there in the hauler business that are, you know, telling people they're going to haul, gr-? that are, you know, telling people they're going to haul granny's trash to the dump and then they just take it up the road and dump it on Ron's road? There's that challenge and then there's a challenge of, we rarely catch people in the act of doing this, but we know the very next day after you clean up, it's back. So I mean, it is just chronically happening and there are hotspots out there.
There's a couple of avenues that the county may want to look into going through Cal Recycle. Years ago, we used to have a tire, the waste tire program and anyone who's been around the county thirty years plus, we, I mean, we had waste tire piles, Tri-County Tire had three million tires and we had another one with a million, a couple other going down, how was it, in between Tulare and Kings County, a couple other with three hundred thousand. And we got this program, we got all these tires cleaned up and we got into where we were even inspecting facilities who generate waste tires and we did that for a number of years and it wasn't cost effective for us to do it anymore because it wasn't paying for enough overhead and stuff like that. And the counties that really did well, I mean, we, we used it as much as we could, but for what you guys are talking about, the counties that deal with this well, their code enforcement takes up this program because if they have the tire, the waste tire program, they're usually, especially on the dump site, they're usually out there for solid waste, illegal dumping anyway, so there's a code enforcement issue. And then on the back end, they're getting, if there's tires out there, they're getting reimbursed for the time they've been out there. And talking about surveillance and stuff, like I know the city of Fresno, code enforcement, they have a waste tire program, they would set up surveillance, there's, and so there's money, there's grant money to do that if waste tires are involved. So that's one thing, you know, maybe a code enforcement program is already set up to be doing a lot of these things. And then as far as just the, some of, I was looking at some of these pictures where there's a lot of waste tires and some of them where there's a more of an illegal dump rather than littering or just roadside dumping. There's also a farm and ranch cleanup program to where an agency, a public agency, doesn't have to be any specific agency, can apply up to a certain amount of money, I would say twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars per incident or something like that, and there's grant money. So if it's too big for the crew to handle, but it's something that if there's money that the crew could go out, pick it up, clean it up, take it to the landfill and there's reimbursement, that's also, there's money available and the Cal Recycle's always pushing that program. But it, we, we could, you know, we thought about taking the program on in environmental health, but it doesn't cover our costs because we're out there doing other stuff. And the people that, you know, the entities that it works best for are the people who are already out at that dump site anyway. So if they're already going to be out there anyway, why not have their time supplemented by a grant? So Cal Recycle does have a waste tire enforcement grant and I don't know if you, whoever took that on, if they could just do, okay, we just want to do the legal dumping part of it or take on, yeah, we're going to go out to every tire facility. So that's, as far as potential revenue or reimbursement, that's one thing that's out there, I just want to suggest.
Because a lot of times I'll get calls on a big amount of tires, a hundred, two hundred tires, and then I'll drive it and I'll look at it and ninety times out of ten, it's a labor cruise. They've got all their trucks, their forklifts, all that stuff parked in the back and it's all their tires that are out in the front. But I do get a hold of code compliance on that and I work with them on that. And then they'll go out there and take a look and do the investigation. And usually those big tires or those big files get cleaned up. It's the landowner or the, the one that has all the lifts and trucks and everything else, so.
Gary, have you, if the dump is off of a county road, can you go in, if it's in, okay, so if it's, have they gone into the orchard, have they gone in, into the private property ways off the road? You're just in a.
We tell every caller, make sure it's on the public right of way by the time the sheriff's office gets there.
I only go to county right of way, we don't go anywhere either. Kind of a liability issue.
Particularly some of these ranchers, you'll find dumps.
Way off the road.
Way, way, way off the main road.
Cities have like a cleanup.
A dump on us program.
Does the county have anything working?
They have half price week at the dump.
So I've been working on that because of COVID, they have had, over a year. There are some of the communities that need, and I told them, starting them up again. The problem is, you know, as well as I do, Chris brought up three mattresses, three tires, three dump bags, they're not going to dump, they just talk to the side of the road. I mean, some, but those, those programs are coming back, they've been suspended because of COVID.
So it's strengthening an ordinance at the county level, putting any more teeth into, you know, the offense part, the penalty part, have any good outcome?
Sheriff, we really work on strengthening the law, that's what makes me a mystery. It used to be an infraction with like a hundred dollar fine or something, I know Sheriff, we really work on strengthening, there's an actual penal code section that makes it, it's written on the book, it's catching them in the act, you know. I mean, I can, when I was in Ag, we caught, I was up on Lord's grave, but we caught a guy, it turned out it was a cleanup guy, you know, and we eventually caught him, but, you know, it takes work and that's not, it works on the problem, it's just a matter of catching them and we're able to work it. I do know, John, you know, the level, the classification of inmates are disappearing too. Because he, didn't, we used to have, I say we, I have to go there, but it wasn't like four or six guys inmates per vehicle.
We used to have the vans.
They had a van, and so they had a vanload of guys that go out.
So that must have been why I thought you had bigger crews, because I thought you used to have like six to eight people go out.
The vans, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I remember, because Tom Gwynne said, we used to have a bunch of guys doing this.
Yeah, but all, because of the law changes and nobody going to, nobody to be incarcerated at that level.
Realignment, early release.
And even to make it even worse, the government just passed that law where you, there's no ability to collect fees to participate in those programs. Those programs are going to go away because they actually cost money. And so that's going to even make it harder, so we're going to get less and less of that classification inmate eligible to participate in programs. Am I correct, John?
So that actually is what I asked, I think at the outset of this, is what can we do to help bolster and continue and enhance this program? Because I am hearing you say, what I thought was true twenty minutes ago, is that we have less people available to do this work, fewer inmates to do this work, fewer, you know, financial resources to back this work. So what can we do as county ag advisory to elevate this issue and, and help get them more resources?
And wait till January one, unless it's thirteen eighty-six, I think it's like where if you're dumping garbage, you have to sort it out yourself, it has to be sorted out and you got to recycle and your mandate, and I, I've met with waste management and they're already set up, they got cameras up, so when they come to your house and they, they're dumping your bin, they're looking there and if you're not recycling or doing it right, first one's a letter, then they start finding you. So who's going to want to go to the dump, to the dump trailer and go boom, dump it, move on? No, because they got to sort it out now. I, I think it's going to make it worse, I may be wrong, I hope I'm wrong, but all of these things, you know, I've sat on the board and they've talked about maybe to raise the fees because of the costs of fuel and everything else that comes up and they, they need to get a raise. And I don't think anybody heard that one, but yeah, it's all, every time, I can remember on patrol, I can say, "Oh, they're charging for TV's now," because that's all that's on the side of the road, they're charging for my, so every time something affects that, it affects what we see on the street.
I think in our last meeting of the carcass disposal subcommittee, and maybe because we had Dr. Noelia Del Rio there, who I think is Brazilian, correct? We were talking about some unique project in Brazil, but there, you know, one of the cities down there that just had a tremendous trash problem was paying its citizens to turn in its trash. There was actually money being paid to people to bring their trash to an appropriate dump site. So, you know, I, I don't know if we, you know, could go there, but that, that is the bottom line problem to both of these topics, is people are not going to be incentivized to stop dumping. But what could we do differently to either deploy more resources or at least make it harder for them to dump?
Probably be cheaper to pay them to try to take this stuff.
Right, sounds like it.
I mean, as much time you're trying to do every day, much you take, yeah, I can imagine it just paying them well, well, for you to bring it up here. And I think if the county had another dump possibly, that would help, you know. Yeah, because you're going through two extremes. Because we only got the two, we got T-Pot and.
That won't, that won't happen, it costs too much to, most counties our side only has one landfill, so it costs, that's why they went from three to two, is to reduce the cost that, because before they went from three to two and reduced the number of transfer stations, it was cheaper, the municipalities didn't have to dump in Tulare County, so it was cheaper to go all the way to Avonale to dump than it was to come to our own county, you know, ten miles away. So that's why they're able to get these long-term agreements, so that's why the county, our solid waste, ended up going from three dumps down to two and cutting out a few transfer stations because of the cost to, that it takes to run a landfill.
And wait on the south end because T-Pot Dome is closing.
Yep.
And they're going to open Woodville, so you're going to have more guys, people in the south not wanting to come all the way, all the way up. So every bit of that has, has an impact on a particular geographical area that will happen. I know that CSET, I met with them, they actually have a state program where they have litter crews and what they're targeting to hire are veterans that need work and I believe it's two and they're working on three, four crews and all they're going to do is work the state highways. So that's, you know, CSET's got, there is a program from the state, some funding, they're trying to push this out there.
Our workforce investment board is working on that pilot project for the city of Viseilia, also putting people that are homeless onto crews to do litter removal and, and that's seeming to work well, but that's just a very small effort that, you know, is either a grant or a short-term funding opportunity that the workforce investment board is working, is working on. But how do we expand some of those kinds of opportunities or is there a fund in this county that we're not tapping into to work on some of that?
I don't know, I know the state's working on it, I know that solid waste is getting enormous amount of money from this program here, we're just accepting.
I was curi, I was curious what the fiscal impact of your service is to the county, do we know that?
How much waste do you think, because you were talking about Dinuba, Orange Cove, and then I know, you know, when I used to go out on complaints a lot, it'd always be a lot towards Kern County, so how much do you think is coming from the border counties?
The, the northern county, Orange Cove, Dinuba areas and all that, that's probably coming out of the present county areas. Because you've got the city of Orange Cove right there, they're getting very far from one of our hotspots, you know, and we also have that squaw, lower squaw valley area that comes down. And some of the names that we see on the paperwork, it's, you know, it is out of county and it's coming out of the present county. But, you know, to put a figure of how much, you know, I don't know.
Well, Luke, I don't remember the exact amount, but Luke, Lucas, when I spoke with them and, and how, they know what their contributions are, I don't know exactly, I don't even know, some of his announcements, you know, report back, but they do, they fund us for as far as.
Yeah, a portion.
Fees and, yeah, they, they, of course, they, they fund one, I know that, I mean, the sheriff's office always has a huge investment pool.
Is there, when we find an address on a dump like that, is there some way just to send a official-looking letter that's your, we relocated your trash, if you want to come clean it?
They often claim, they take it and they didn't know it had been dumped illegally.
This is, this is not an old problem.
It is an old problem.
I've been.
It's not a new problem.
Not a, not a new problem, the fifties, when I lived on a ranch in New Mexico, we had it, and I remember coming home one Sunday and there was a pile of trash right at our gate. And we were nine miles off the highway. My dad brought the horse carrier up, loaded it all up, put a layer of horse manure in with it and took it back to town to the address and it was in, unloaded on the driveway. And I saw people in the window, but nobody had the nerve to come out. Same, I know there's farmers here that have felt that same frustration.
I know farmers that have taken it back.
I'm sure that people have, but.
It'd be nice if they could take it to Sacramento.
Well, we're saving that for the goats issue.
Supervisor McCary, did you, did you tell me maybe at the last very informal conversation we were having about this, that when we report it to the, you know, your team for pickup, should we also be telling the landowner to make a report to a sheriff's department representative that would actually file a, a report of the dump?
Unless it's changed, Captain, when I spoke to the sheriff, because I, you know, things change since I retired, but he goes, yeah, and he says that he, by calling dispatch, was helping getting sergeants to know that there's a problem, hot spot where they can control it, they can check it, if the area such as Ron's came up was so bad, that's how we called, we had one area that was over and over and over and we found it, it's a time limit, they have cameras, it was, that technology wasn't here, we just sat out there and rushed and we ended up waiting and it showed up. So we just ran it on, but there, now there's cameras set up to take pictures and send it to you, there's a lot of technology, but patrol has to know. And, and, you know, over time, this program's evolved, it's a great program, but it used to have to go through the lieutenant in order to go up, or John, there's all kinds of things that went on, so there was always that communication, but what's happened now is by restricted litter crew, they know there's a problem, dogs, Gary, I don't know what you've got to do now, you're reporting it to dispatch, to patrol or not.
I have a, a spot out of Rosie, or between Rosie and Cullar right now, that it, I'm giving him or something here. And solid waste is sending me, Farm Bureau's sending me emails on it, I drove it the other day, my guys cleaned it up and then Farm Bureau sent me another deal the next morning for a dump. So I drove again and I left there, went straight to Rosie Sub, met with sergeant and he set that up as a patrol check. If nothing else, just flash the paint. Since they've been flashing that paint, we have not gotten no more calls. I think I know where the individual's house is because everything's stacked up right there of everything that we're picking up, now maybe with him seeing the cars cruising, I don't know, but I just know it's stopped, you know, last group.
So as part of, as part of our standard response to our callers, should we be saying to them, "Okay, we're going to, you know, put in motion our normal request to the farm, you know, the sheriff's farm for pickup, but you should still go ahead and call a patrol deputy to, to file a report." I mean, should we be doing that with every caller?
Yes.
Because I think our callers feel like this is such a low priority in the sense of it not being a, you know, emergency situation that they feel like, you know, we're just going to get laughed at for calling this in.
No, because some of them are calling dispatch and I get a lot from dispatch, and when I see yours, it's the same one.
They often match up, so we should be having them call a patrol deputy every time.
John, that's, you're going to call now, but that's what the sheriff had told me back then, so that's your fault.
Yeah, probably so, or our team will work with patrol, they can map out the hotspots and do what they're doing now, or do patrol checks in the hotspots and see what they're doing. But if it's really bad for them, they can.
And they can.
I do want to make a comment about, you're talking about low priority. I haven't even yelled back and cussed at out of frustration because it's reoccurs so often for when we say, "Well, we call dispatch." No, because it's, and they're funding it to break them down. So they're there to call, if they're, if somebody's called, that's the big deal. The frustration comes out of nothing being done, but when, when they show up, just like when I showed up, it's my first time there, I know nothing about it, and someone just whits in because the problem is that's. And someone just wits in because the problem is vested. So however, Captain Gonzalez assists the procedure, the sheriff's department, but I know they're willing to work with anybody to get, to get it done. And, uh, we just gotta work together and not worry about whether or not it's low priority or not. Dispatch the sergeant, they'll prioritize the call for a response. We just need to get a report.
Well, answer me this, can the Farm Bureau call it in? Can my office call and make the report to the patrol deputies, to your dispatch? Or does it have to be the victim of the crime?
Or, or why, why can't it be some kind of system that when you send it to the team, there's a CC that goes to the, to the right patrol?
We, we would be happy to make you aware of every, you know, every time we dispatch something to, to your team, but I, I, I just, I guess I always thought that the victim of the crime had to be who reported it to a patrol deputy.
What?
Hi, all, this is Herb Jim, I'm sorry, I just, my calendar just told four and I have another meeting starting in a few minutes, so I have to jump off. But in the chat box, Trish, I put in Julie Finsell's information, so if you wanna start the pilot project, um, let me know and we can make sure that we have the right C specialist involved.
And Julie was part of, uh, well, she never attended, but Julie and I had several conversations as part of the animal carcass meeting. So we, we know Julie well, thank you.
Good, my pleasure. And I can introduce you Rebecca Ozerank, who also is our livestock specialist in Fresno and Madera, and would be happy to help with this as well. So anything my department can do, we are happy to help.
Thanks, Farm Jod.
Thank you all, take care, bye-bye.
So, I don't wanna speak to sheriff's department, cause I don't think it changed, Captain Gonzalez here. But I will say this, you want a trash hauling service, or you want services to clean it up and stop the call? I think we want the latter.
I, I want both, but I want the latter as a long-term outcome.
The latter will accomplish both, but in the long term. So I think that's when we need to work with Howard, the sheriff's department, to just proceed, cause they're gonna, they're gonna make a difference on stopping, right?
And I think on the front end, um, there is a requirement in the county for mandatory trash pickup. And I know when we've gone out to illegal dumps, trash complaints and stuff like that, a lot of times you find out, they don't have trash service. And so we would recommend, I, I think Solid Waste, um, checks on that, but I don't know it, how many people, like, how, how is it assessed? Like, we have this many homes and places around the county, whether or not they have trash service? Because if they had trash service, you know, I think, uh, you would think a significant portion of this would go away. I mean, you're always gonna have the litter, but as far as the illegal dumping, it doesn't help the border counties, you know? But as far as people loading, you know, cause we can all drive around the county, you'll see the trailer filled with trash. And they can get an exemption from Solid Waste to do that and haul it to the dump, which there's a lot of that, especially around, um, South Valley, Porterville area. But I would suspect a lot of people don't have mandatory trash service. And I don't know how one would go about to determine who has trash service and who doesn't.
Thank you, Keith. Well, uh, I really appreciate Sheriff's Office participation, Trish. I think, I think we can keep these on the agenda, but we can't take, we're carrying forward on the agenda, both of these items. Uh, I'm not sure if you have more information to share with us for our September meeting? We, we may contact you, Gary, or Captain, if we're able to see all that. And definitely the carcass disposal, I'll call our, until. Any other comments before we adjourn?
Jim, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Tom.
Ron.
Ron, I'm sorry.
Okay, you know, it's impossible to know who has trash service and who doesn't. Is it possible in this county to force every address to pay for trash haul and pay for pickup? Can it be mandated? In other words, can it be mandated that you pay for and have a trash disposal, you in your front yard or whatever?
I got a lot of people shaking their heads over here, Ron.
I, I can say, this is Airs, this is Airs Aheen Deputy County Counsel. I can, I can tell you, uh, for certain that currently, uh, there's not compulsory trash pickup within the county. Uh, and to do so would be quite, quite the process, without going into the specifics, it would be quite the process.
Well, if you look at the amount and the tonnage of garbage and tires and junk that the county has to pick up, I mean, that costs something too. I mean, wouldn't it be worth, I mean, there are counties in this state that require trash pickup, you know? Why can't Hillary County do the same thing? Just, just like most cities, right? Cities require it and you build directly.
Cities, cities tend to have compulsory trash pickup. Um, more rural, unincorporated counties tend not to have mandatory, uh, trash pickup, to leave it to the individual as to whether or not they want to have, um, a defective tax on this incident to their ownership of their property. Uh, and, and that's really what this becomes a question of. There's a California constitutional, um, restriction that requires certain steps that a local agency take before imposing what essentially max incident to property ownership. And so, uh, this, this is a, this is a question that, that kind of comes to the, the core of ultimately county policy decision-making. And frankly, the supervisor, the board supervisor would probably be the appropriate person to answer Mr. Bear Jim's question as opposed to me.
I mean, we, we can bring it up and ask, I know that we have, I don't know how we could check, we have five.
Put a five one in there.
Five, we don't have five providers.
There would always be six, six.
Six haulers?
Yes.
So, I mean, that would require to know what, of their entire customer, I, I, I think it'd be extremely difficult. I think that'd be more a question, we'd have to run down through the, our mayor, kind of see if they even had the ability. I mean, obviously we have parcel maps and everything else, but, uh.
Well, it, it comes down, it comes down to the county taxation deal. Yeah, the county taxes every parcel. And every parcel that you own is taxed, you know? I mean, that's the only way to make it work in the city, and that's the only way you're gonna have to make it work in the county, is that the landowner that owns that parcel or owns that house or that rental or whatever, you know, if you got six rentals, well, there's gonna be an amount added to your property tax every year for this pickup service. And then, you know, the county provides the service and the landowner, well, the property owner then pays for it, to his taxes. And I don't know any other way to do it.
Would you like me to reach out to our name and get some information for presentation next meeting, or provide information for next meeting?
Yeah, the, the county may get this as a board, but they ask me, I'll have to do that.
Yeah, what, what? Would you wash them, if, if Washum's there?
Sure, sure.
You would agree, agree with it? Okay, so I'll, I'll do that.
Good question, Ron.
And the, the, the other thing too is, is in my experience, is you enter stuff here and there, but it's not the everyday trash that you're finding. It's the, somebody's moving and so what's left behind is just dumping on the side of the road. Uh, remodeling, dumping on the side of the road. Someone gets a new bed, it's on the side of the road. So it's not the everyday, yeah, and you do find trash bags or some household trash, but that's not what you see every day. Maybe, maybe, maybe it's changed, but.
No, we don't, we don't see that much household trash. It's more the remodels, carpets, couches, TVs, appliances, appliances, washer, dryer, refrigerator. Somebody's refrigerator goes out in the heat, um, and it's loaded with food, um, it's along the road.
So you're not seeing the everyday stuff? And that's, that's, that's what we, that's what was my experience as well.
Ron, Ron gets a lot of baby diapers. He gets a lot of household trash, but he may be the exception.
We get, we get a lot of used toilet paper, and I'm tired of that. I mean, and you, you're tired of sanitation, and I mean, you know, give it, give it, well, whatever.
That's true.
Tells me we have people in this county that don't have toilets to flush, or they're choosing not to use them for some other reason.
No water?
Bad plumbing, bad septic, or some other problem.
They don't flush it?
Well, most of these issues are old, long-term problems. We haven't brought anything new to the table today that we haven't been talking about for decades. But my intent with both of these items was to bring these matters up for additional input, get the right county agencies at the table, find out what's working, what can we be doing better? Are there other innovative models that another neighboring county's doing that we should be looking to prototype here? Is there just a bottleneck of not enough money or not enough people or not enough inmates? Or what else can we do to be supportive? How can we help? That's my goal. How do we make this less of a burden on our landowners?
Yes, and, and you know, I'm thinking about the property owners or, or residents, whether they're in the city or the county, that if they're having their house remodeled and they're paying for that service, they should probably ask that person to give them a receipt that they took it to the dump. So this way, when it does get spied off the road, says, but do you have a receipt that they took it to the dump? Maybe another avenue we can add also. So this way, they don't have to excuse, well, I hadn't taken it down.
Missing that accountability piece.
Yeah, and if you, if you hire somebody who knows somebody who's not a contractor, then you don't know when stuff leaves, that's what, you know, your house or whatever, where it's going.
That's, that's what my suggestion is, is that the person hires someone to take it and dump it and pays for that, and that person should ask that person for a receipt. So this way, if they're buying any of their material from their house, says that, but I had it done, that says, would you have a receipt that you took it to the dump, people? And that's just something that maybe could be done.
Like, cause I've paid for a junk hauler, like on that next door, out to come and pick up some stuff before, and then you kinda wonder, hmm, I wonder if it ended up where it was supposed to be.
Where did it go?
Yeah, we're, we got some people that have other things they're gonna have to do today. And I think since we can't take any further action, I'll entertain a motion. Nope, there's no motion.
We gotta make it, no, I'm sure.
Thank you, guys.
Here, I'll see it inside.
Eric, thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
That's the way it goes.
Thank you for your appreciation.
Oh, there it is.
There it is.
Yeah, how do I give it my best, if we don't have a phone?
So there was a, a program in India, um, back on the bridge, when you started, they would pay people some amount of money, uh, for a cobra. They, they brought the cobra, you know, there was a cobra, you know, there were lots of cobra. And, and Trish brought Asia, you know, other groups, other countries, it was ten dollars for the trash. And so what happened in India was they started finding, um, cobra farms, people were farming for breeding and raising. Right, right, right. And so, and so at the end of it, and after that whole pay for cobra program, there are gonna be more cobras.
Yeah, well, maybe what?
They released all the cobras in the farm.
Right.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, no, if you're certain, if you're gonna do trash, we're just gonna, find a way to bring track, make trash.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then more will come from the other camp.
I know, uh, we had a tire amnesty.
And maybe, you know, one day, uh, one of the, one of the, before the superpowers, we get there.
I know other states.
Where was it?
Where was it?
How many areas?